The time certain it's coming up, and this is a public hearing. This is a public hearing that redistricting of the city of Oxnard district. At time certain, and so I have some items that I'd like to read here at this time. At this time is a place and set for a public hearing, an item L1 by the city attorney. Subject is public hearing regarding redistricting of the city council districts. And by the way, I'm sorry, we missed consent items, and we'll come back to that. So because of the time certain. The recommendation is the city council conduct a public hearing. One, to receive a report of redistricting process for the city council districts and the criteria to be considered to redraw city council district boundaries. And two, to receive a public input regarding the composition of one or more council districts. And we start with a city clerk certification of publication and then written communications, if any. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, there was a legal notice for this public hearing, published in Vida newspaper on July 22, 2021, and on the city's website on July 22, 2021. The city clerk's office received written communications on this item, and they have been provided to council for consideration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The city attorney will now introduce a demographic consultant who will provide a presentation regarding this item. Following the presentation will be available for any answers, any brief clarifying questions. Council members may, at that time, take public testimony items, and council will have the opportunity to provide additional feedback after the public hearing question. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to have Chief Assistant City Attorney Ken Rozell introduce our demographic consultant. Ken has been working to get the consultant on board and was very involved when the council districts were first created a few years ago. So, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Before I turn it over to Kristin Parks, who's the city's demographer with National Demographics, I wanted to provide the council with a brief introduction to the process we're starting.
Ken, can I interrupt at this point? Do we have two speakers on this item? Do we speak after, or?
Our recommendation would be that we have the brief introduction I'm going to provide. We have the presentation from Ms. Parks, and then
Follow the procedure.
Then we have the public comment, and then the council can ask any questions that they have.
I just want to share that because we have two speakers, but thank you. We'll follow the protocol. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So, once a decade, the districts are redrawn after the federal census to reflect population changes over the previous 10 years. This includes the redrawing and rebalancing of federal congressional districts, state assembly districts, state senate districts, the county board of supervisor districts, and of course, city council districts. And aside from the city council districts, which we'll discuss in a moment, the most relevant redistricting to residents of the city of Oxnard are the districts of the Board of Supervisors. Right now, Oxnard is represented by three different members of the Board of Supervisors. The city and its residents need to fully participate in the county redistricting process to ensure that our voices are heard, and that process will start shortly. As Mr. Fisher alluded to earlier, the city went through a redistricting process in 2017 and 2018 with the creation of six council districts. The city had a very robust public participation process with a total of eight public meetings and public hearings. The city council, as part of that process, considered a total of 39 qualifying maps that met the requirements for the district maps before the council selected map 60, excuse me, 635 as the map for council districts. When that process was going forward, the city used the 2010 census numbers when the city council created those districts. And because that census data is now 10 years old, the city council will need to use the 2020 federal census numbers that's been modified or will be modified by the state to reflect incarcerated persons. And those revised numbers will reflect the growth and population shifts throughout the city. And this will allow the city council to rebalance the council districts to ensure that they comply with federal and state law. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin Parks of National Demographics. And as we've mentioned earlier, after her presentation, we recommend that the city council take public comment, and then Kristin and city staff will be available to answer any questions that you may have. Kristin?
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kristin Parks. I'm a consultant with National Demographics Corporation, and I'm going to share with you a brief presentation that gives you an overview of the redistricting process, the legal requirements, and the timeline for the city of Oxnard. So, Oxnard, as you know, as you heard from Mr. Rozell, did recently switch two districts from having at-large elections for council members. And because this was done with the previous decade census data, redistricting will have to happen, and the lines will have to be redrawn to ensure population balance. So I'll explain that a little bit more in a moment. But November 2022 will be your first elections after redistricting with new boundaries. So again, here is the current map of your six districts that was adopted in 2018. This is our baseline. And our timeline for this year and into next year is kicking off tonight with your first public hearing. So congratulations, we've started on the process. What we're all experiencing across the United States this year is a compressed timeline for redistricting because of delays in processing the 2020 census. In any other decade, we would already have the data we need to begin drawing maps and getting through this process. However, we are still waiting. We're getting closer, though. We expect that the U.S. Census Bureau will release total population data to the states by mid-August. August 16th or 17th, we are expecting to have that data. Then what happens in the state of California is the state takes their roster of state prisoners and reallocates them back to their last known home address. That takes approximately four weeks, maybe up to six weeks. So really, by the end of September is when we will have that California official redistricting data. Once we have that in hand, NDC will be launching an online mapping tool for Oxnard. This is the same tool that you use to empower the public to draw maps in the redistricting process. It'll just be the newer version of the tool. I'll talk more about that in a moment. But what you're looking at on this slide is the overview. There's actually now four, no, five, public hearings scheduled for Oxnard. And since they're not here, I'm going to read out the dates for them, though they are also in the staff report and on the website. I believe it's youroxnard.org/redistricting. So, the California, the state of California requires four public hearings. Your city is going to go above and beyond and have five public hearings. So as mentioned, tonight is the first one. Then we have September 30th, December 6th, January 22nd, and February 24th. After we get that data in October, and we are actually empowered legally to start drawing maps, then we're going to encourage the public to use the online tool or paper tool, whatever they're most comfortable with, to submit their own district maps and participate in this process. And the deadline from the state of California for the city of Oxnard is April 17, 2022. And that will give the county registrar voters plenty of time to update all of the systems with new maps in advance of the November 2022 election. So there's a lot we're going to do in a relatively short period of time, but you're going to meet your deadline, and we are excited to get started. I want to take a moment to review the legal requirements for redistricting because if you were around paying attention to the redistricting process, that's a different set of legal requirements. Some of them are the same, right? So the ones that are the same are the federal laws. These federal laws are absolutely mandatory. We must follow federal law during the redistricting process. And the first consideration is equal population. What that means is to ensure fair representation across the city. Each district should be more or less the same size or have the same number of residents in it. Each council member should represent the same number of people as every other one. We also have to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965. And what that means to us is that we need to be careful to not divide up any protected groups such that their voting power would be diluted. So this is why we'll look at some of the racial and ethnic data. However, under federal law, race cannot be the predominant factor in drawing any district lines. So that would be racial garymandering, which we do want to avoid. That's the federal law. It may sound familiar to you. What we're working with in the state of California is a brand-new law called the California Fair Maps Act. This law gives cities a ranked list of criteria that must be considered in order as we go through redistricting. So I'm really briefly going to go through these. There's, the staff report also has an excellent summary of all of this information. But the first criterion that California says cities have to consider is geographic contiguity, simply meaning that each district should be connected to itself and have no pieces that are disconnected somewhere else. The second criterion is to minimize division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. So your current districts do a good job of grouping your city. You may also remember talking about communities of interest. They are defined under this new law as populations within your city that have shared social or economic interests. So we're going to spend a little extra time trying to explain to the public what this community of interest thing means. The third criterion is to create easily identifiable boundaries so that any resident of Oxnard can explain to their neighbors where their district begins and ends. Finally, the state law says that districts should be compact. There are many different ways we can measure compactness, but the law, using the terms of the law, we can think about this as not bypassing a nearby population to take in a more distant population. Again, this is the last criteria. So compactness is only considered insofar as it doesn't conflict with any of these other criteria or federal law. So when we're talking about compactness, sometimes we're talking about the shape of districts looking strange. There are other goals that are legally permissible. It is part of this process, and they are things that have been considered traditionally in other decades during redistricting. However, it's important to note that all of the other goals listed here, or any Oxnard-specific other goals you may have, can only be considered insofar as you're considering them after federal and state legal requirements and that they're not conflicting with any of those things. So we'll refer back to this certainly at times when we look at draft maps and we'll say, okay, this map meets, is a legally permissible map. It's meeting these criteria. So defining neighborhoods is something that the city can, already does to some extent, is defining neighborhoods. The reason that we're talking about this is because state law says that districts shouldn't divide neighborhoods. That's something that anyone paying attention to the redistricting process is familiar with as well. I want to spend a little more time instead talking about communities of interest. And communities of interest, like neighborhoods, are a population size that is smaller than your total city council district. So these can be thought of as the building blocks. So when we're looking at district lines, we're thinking which neighborhoods and which communities of interest and communities of interest and neighborhoods can overlap? Which ones do we want to group together within a single district so that all of those communities and neighborhoods can be effectively and fairly represented? Community of interest can be thought of in a lot of different ways. Unlike a neighborhood, which may have more objective boundaries, right? Your planning department or other city department may be able to say, here's the boundary of this neighborhood. Communities of interest are defined more subjectively by the public, by people saying, you know, here is a group of people within these geographic boundaries that comes together to talk about, for instance, bicycle safety around a given school or something that, you know, I make up lots of random examples. But you can look at shared interests in safety, transit, land use, environmental concerns, common social networks, places of worship, community centers, shared history, cultural identity, or languages spoken, similar socioeconomic status, et cetera, et cetera. So this is something we want members of the public to start thinking about now because you can start thinking about your communities of interest now if you are part of a community that wants to be included within a single district or does not want to be divided. So again, we're not just thinking about what brings people together in that community, but we do want you to think, also start thinking about how you would map that community, right? It's something smaller than a total district, but you can still map it even if it's just a few blocks or a rather small area. You're going to think about the obvious boundaries, like highways, roads, the ocean, but also think about areas around landmarks, think about other waterways, hills, anything that is easily identifiable as a boundary. Of course, one of the things that NDC will be doing is creating a review map, an online ArcGIS review map, where you can look at different layers and you can see different things, like perhaps zoning, land use, looking at school districts, looking at neighborhoods, so that you can actually see some of these characteristics you may use to identify your community of interest. You can see them on a map. Ultimately, once we have that total population data and California-adjusted redistricting data, we will be launching MapTitude online for redistricting, which is a very powerful tool that members of the public can use to draw either their own district or all of the six districts across the city. One of the nice things about this tool is that it is available in multiple languages. So you simply will select what language you want to use it in, and all of the buttons and descriptor menus will change automatically. We also prepare a paper map that folks can use who just want to do things the old-school way. That is encouraged. In fact, if you want to start with a paper map and then try the more advanced online map, that's what I would encourage people to do. We also have an Excel supplement, so you can see some of that demographic data. And you can use that side by side with the paper map. So there's lots of options to get the community involved, depending on how much time they want to invest and what their level of technical access or skill is. So at the next public hearing, I expect to be demoing how to use these tools in a little more detail. And that, of course, I think lists here the six languages for the online.
Pardon that disruption. Please continue.
We are wrapping up here with just a few questions to leave for the public to think about as they're starting to engage with this process. Although we're still waiting for data, they can already start thinking about the building blocks of their districts, which are their neighborhoods and communities of interest. So I will end there. Thank you, Mayor and council members. And I look forward to being able to answer any questions you have.
I have, I have some questions to the consultant or maybe to Ken. You know, we talked initially about counting the prisoners, number one. So is the prisoners for the district here only? Or how do we, or per district or for the entire city? That's question number one, and then...
Okay.
And then the other question, then the other thing that I have is for mapping. So the folks that don't have computers, they can actually have... What type of drawing can they have? How can they participate with that? How do they pick up maps and how do they do their mapping? Number two. And of course, the other part that I think is really, really important is the legal requirements. It's extremely important that people understand that and we can convey that message to the folks. And of course, you know, the other thing is the translation. Right now, we're translating in Spanish, which is really important. But we have other languages. Do we have to convey in other languages? If right now we have, for example, the predominant language is Spanish. And the last item that I have is contiguous. I know in the past I've seen where some districts are contiguous potentially by one point, maybe one, maybe a block or so connecting one district to another. Do we have to have a contiguous form like so many miles or so many blocks or so forth? So those are the questions that I have.
Okay, Mayor, would you like us to answer them now? Would you like to receive the public testimony, then we can respond to all the questions?
When do we do that, yeah?
I'm sorry?
After we have the public.
Okay, very good.
And I'm not sure if you have any other council members that might want to answer those questions. Okay, Councilman Perrell? You've got to unmute yourself, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I apologize to the public. I recall last time when this was done, there was a rather deep discussion, but there was never a resolution. The council districts, there was a large concern about the racial makeup of the city of Oxnard. And there was a specific concern with respect to people of Asian Pacific or Hispanic and what Filipino-Americans group fell in. And we never got an answer to that. And there was a large amount of concerned citizens of Filipino descent that, you know, they might want to be interested in being in their, what you call, group of concern, or however the young lady mentioned it. But I think since this is the second time around, before we get too far down the road, maybe not tonight, but before we get too far down the road, I believe the residents of the city deserve an answer to that question. Thank you. That's my only question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we continue then? I don't see any other. Okay, so, Councilman Turan?
Yes, thank you. A quick question. This is probably more for the city staff, perhaps the consultant. But considering it's a compressed time schedule that we have to get this done in, I was just wondering if the potential dates we have there for public hearings, if those are anticipated to be regular council meetings or if we plan to have any special meetings for that? And if we will publish those dates well ahead of time so people know when those meetings are going to be? Thank you. That's my only question.
We'll answer those questions after the testimony. Okay, Councilman Madrigal, Oscar?
Well, I was just waiting to have the public input so that way we could discuss as a council.
Okay, thank you then. Our next item on the agenda here is that now we're going to open the public testimony portion of the hearing. And members of the public were invited to sign up to speak on this item on the city's website. Anyone who signed up before the deadline had three minutes to speak on this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
Mayor, yes. We have two public speakers for this public hearing.
Okay, we have two speakers, so I'm now going to open the public hearing. And we have two speakers, and the speaker number one is Ronald Aruejo, followed by Lucy Cartagena.
Ronald Aruejo?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. You have three minutes to speak, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, city clerk. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Ronald Aruejo. I will focus my comments on the public mapping portion and stress for a more inclusive and iterative public interaction process in which there are more rounds to solicit public input than at the first redistricting process. Because the impetus of the first redistricting process was due to a lawsuit or a pending potential lawsuit, and a timeline was compressed even more due to the dual decisions of not only how many districts, but also how the district should be drawn, I argue that this redistricting round should be able to provide even more opportunities for citizens to make their cases for how they define a neighborhood and/or a community of interest. Specifically regarding the online redistricting tool, I hope there will be more customer service assistance in general. I, along with others, had thought that their maps were submitted to the city council for consideration and were a little disappointed when they were not shown as options. Additionally, many other people had trouble saving and submitting their maps for consideration the last time. Hopefully, more efforts will be made to help in this area. I look forward to the rest of the redistricting process. Thank you for listening to my comments regarding citizen participation.
Good, Ronald. Our next speaker is Lucy Cartagena.
Mayor, Ms. Cartagena is not available at this time.
Okay, if she comes on board, then we'll go ahead and... Also, Madam Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
No additional speakers, Mayor. Thank you.
If not, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Council members, do you wish to make any comments? I know I made some comments before, but the purpose of the public hearing is to receive a report and receive public input. And also, again, do we have any council member comments at this time?
Is it okay if we answer the initial round of questions just to get that out on the table for everyone? That would be helpful, I think.
Let's go ahead and answer the initial.
So I'm going to start with the easiest one, which is, I believe it was Councilmember Turan's question about the meeting dates. And we were very specific to set all those as standalone meetings. So as a review, September 30 is a Thursday. December 6 is a Monday. January 22 is a Saturday in the morning. And February 24 is a Thursday. And those are all standalone, dedicated to this singular purpose. I also want to note, in the event that the data comes very, very late in October, in September from the state, what we can do is still hold the September 30 meeting to have some of these substantive discussions, such as communities of interest. But we can always add a meeting sometime in October if that data comes late.
And Mr. City Manager, some of those meetings, I know you mentioned it's at 6:00 PM, so the public can have an opportunity to participate. And the Saturday is really important, too, for individuals that are working.
Correct. And I'll hand it back to Mr. Rozell to answer the rest of the first round of questions.
Before Mr. Rozell resumes, I just wanted to point out that that schedule is not only in the staff report for this item that's posted with this agenda, but it's also posted on the website for the redistricting process. And that, again, is oxnard.org/redistricting.
Okay, go ahead, Ken.
Okay, very good. The first question related to the way in which the prisoners are reallocated. If I can ask Ms. Parks to address that issue, please?
Sure. So the statewide database is the organization that is doing this. And what they're doing is two things. First, if you have a prison in your jurisdiction, they're going to zero out that population. Then for every prisoner with a last known home address, they're actually going to reallocate that count for that person back to their home jurisdiction. So... So, um, in terms of Ventura, you're going to be, or not Ventura, but Ventura County, um, there, there may or may not be that significant of changes coming from that, right? But this is required by law that we use that data set. So, uh, once we receive that, that will be what we're using officially for all jurisdictions in the state of California, all cities.
Are they counted per district? Or the citywide?
Kristin, would they go to a specific address or just a specific jurisdiction? So, so that would go by district?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The next question related to the way in which the, the maps and other information would be available. As we have discussed, these, these tools will be available online. And as we did with the districting process, we made physical maps available in the City Clerk's office. Individuals, individuals could stop by, uh, fourth floor across the street and pick up these maps and could, could draw them. And we did get some physical maps which were submitted. Uh, and then we transmitted those to National Demographics who also did our districting process and they were put in the electronic format, um, so they could run the calculations to determine the makeup of the various districts.
And Ken, is there a time period that they can pick up, uh, those maps at the city manager's, uh, City Clerk's office?
We will be waiting to, to release that until the data is released because until the data is released, uh, the, the drawing of the maps doesn't make sense because we won't have the final numbers. But, uh, as Ms. Parks indicated, once that information is released, then we'll be ready to roll out both the online mapping tools, uh, as well as the physical maps. I also wanted to, to indicate that I hear what Mr. Araho indicated about the mapping process being a little difficult. I will admit, not being computer savvy on some things, I had some difficulty, although others in our office did not have any issues at all. But, um, I have been informed that the software in the last, um, three to four years has been upgraded substantially, so it is a much more user-friendly interface. So it should be easier, but we're also, uh, willing to, to work with the public to ensure they have access. Uh, as Ms. Parks indicated, there's an Excel spreadsheet which gives the, the data. You can draw the physical maps, um, and we're ready, willing and able to work with the public to ensure that every individual in the city who wants to participate will have a chance to do so.
And potentially maybe able to get volunteers to help out those individuals.
That's, that's a potential, uh, as well with COVID, it's a little tougher to, to know the kind of interaction that could occur. But I think with the physical maps, it makes it easier for the, the, the public to, to have a map, to look at data, um, online, possibly going to the library if they don't have a computer at home and then draw those, those maps. So, um, we, we want to make it clear, we hear the, the public had issues last time to some degree and, and there's some positive improvements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, another, uh, issue was raised about what is meant by contiguous. Under the new changes in the law, contiguous has to be more than just a street corner. So it has to be, um, you know, a block or more. It cannot just be one point on a, on a street. I think one other thing though is that because of Oxnard's, um, corporate boundaries are, are jagged, they're not always nice squares like you have in, in some areas, but they do have to connect. So a district, all parts of a district have to connect by more than just, uh, you know, at a, at a four-way stop kind of thing.
And, and that's important too, Ken, because in the past we've had districts, for example, assembly districts and senate districts where they have only one little point. And that was considered contiguous at the time, but they have to have a, a pretty substantial contiguous, uh, uh, point for that matter.
Absolutely, and National Demographics has, has drafted, um, hundreds of different, um, maps throughout the, the state. So they are considered statewide experts. They have testified at a number of, of, uh, trials regarding voting rights issues. So they are very aware of, of the, the regulations. Um, as far as, uh, providing information in, in other languages, we are working to ensure that materials are available in, in Spanish. Uh, and, you know, making sure that these, these tools are online, just as Ms. Parks indicated. The online tools are available, um, in, in Spanish and other languages as well to ensure that the public, uh, can participate. Um, the issue which Councilmember Parello raised regarding, uh, the racial makeup of, of the city of Oxnard, as part of the, the process that we went through going over a number of maps with the districting process, we did look at the Filipino, uh, community. Uh, and it is my understanding that the way that the map that was adopted by council, um, was configured, it ensured that, that the Filipino community was not divided, but it was located in one council district to ensure that, uh, those individuals had a voice, uh, in determining, uh, who would be their council member, while they did not have a majority in that district. They still had a, a substantial number, I believe the percentage was about 15%. So they had the ability to have some, some say in that.
Excellent, excellent, okay.
And we've already gone over the dates with Councilmember Turan, so I believe those are the, the questions. If there's any other questions, Ms. Parks or I would be happy to, to respond.
Yeah, we have a council member, Madrigal. Oscar.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, real quickly, I know, uh, this process going through it the first time, uh, there is, um, some pros and cons to going to districts as we've seen. Uh, but overall, you know, the first time around, you know, it was in a whirlwind. Quite honestly, you know, we were thrown by a lawsuit. We had X number of days to get things done and it seemed like everything was done in a hurry. And it was done right around the holidays, so I think the timeline is going to kind of mirror a little bit. So then we had people coming in like right before we approved this, I believe it was March or April of 2018, who were really upset that they had not heard about this. Um, but, you know, we did get a lot, a lot of maps the first time. I guess unfortunately we didn't get all of them, but we did get a lot. Um, you know, little shout out to, uh, Mr. Stein, who I think single-handedly probably turned in about half of the maps that the city received. Um, but overall, you know, it was a tough process, but something from the first time around that I do fully, uh, believe that we should keep is, I remember we had a meeting in South Oxnard. Uh, we weren't at the South Oxnard Center and I believe that one of those public meetings should be at the South Oxnard Center, at least one, if not more. Um, we, we could do this South Oxnard Center, we could do another one at the PAC, so on and so forth. Uh, the key to this is, you know, try to get as many people involved as we possibly can. Um, with that being the case, it's not just the city or the school district, but the heavy one that I, you know, personally, I think, uh, we should focus on all as residents of the city is the Board of Supervisors. We have three supervisors and realistically, we don't have three. So, you know, we should have pushed heavily, I know it's unfortunate, but it can't be one district because it's certainly one Oxnard, but we should heavily push for two only. Um, but overall, you know, the process was, uh, difficult. Um, looking forward to it. Um, uh, we just need to get Matt, well, first we need to get numbers, but whenever numbers do come in, um, I know it's going to be a long, uh, tedious process. Um, going through this, uh, before with, uh, Councilmember Parello and Mayor Protem. Um, I know that as time gets near, there will be some big time discussions amongst us. Uh, there'll be fighting, so on and so forth. Uh, but it is, uh, for a good cause. Um, the first time around, we gained two new council members from this. We went from a board of five to a board of seven. Um, and then now we're in districts and now those districts are going to change so quickly. So overall, you know, I'm looking forward to this and, uh, to the public, uh, either on TV or on YouTube. You know, please get involved when the time does come. Uh, this is going to shape the city for the next 10 years.
You want to answer that, or then we go, then we go to Turan?
Yes, um, thank you, Councilmember Madrigal for your comments. Um, staff is very supportive of, uh, having meetings throughout Oxnard. We believe with the eight public, um, hearings and meetings we had the last time, we had one at the PAC, we only had one in South Oxnard. Um, I think it does give the ability for residents in different neighborhoods to provide, uh, input. And that is definitely something that, that staff would support. And, you know, we will be happy to, to work, uh, you know, with the council to have, uh, these meetings. And depending when the, the data comes in, uh, the, the city manager mentioned, uh, a, a meeting in October. Uh, we also think that a possibility may be a, a, a meeting in early January. We just want to make sure there's plenty of opportunities for the public, uh, to participate. We think it's, it's, it's very important, both at the, the city council level as well as the redistricting for the Board of Supervisors. We believe it's important that Oxnard residents have a, a true voice, uh, in the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, you know, right now with the way Oxnard is divided up, uh, with the Board of Supervisor districts, um, the just, the supervisors are not necessarily, except for, um, um, you know, several, they, they all do not represent, um, the issues that Oxnard is facing. So I think that's, that's something that we would really encourage the public to participate in that process uh, as we go forward and, and, um, ensure that there's a, a fair drawing of the districts, both, um, and the countywide as well as with our city as well.
And, and, and Ken, you know, I think the, uh, council member mentioned that's important that we've worked with the county with the redistricting to redistrict, excuse me, Oxnard and have two supervisors as opposed to three, because the way it's set up now, it's a very, very difficult for, for one supervisor to really pay attention to, to Oxnard, you know? So I think looking at it is extremely important, maybe potentially can end up with two supervisors.
That, that is definitely a, a potential. There has also been a change in the law about the dividing of cities. So, uh, while clearly the, the redistricting for the county happened in 2010, the law was different. But since the last time the county, uh, drew their districts, um, it, the dividing Oxnard into three different districts would not meet the current state of the law. So some changes will need to be made, uh, at that level. And we look forward to working with the county for a fair and equitable redistricting, um, of, of the, the Board of Supervisors.
And, and that's important because we had a lot of concerns the way it was divided before, which I, I think is important now with the new law, I should say, potentially it'll help us.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilman Turan?
If I may add really quickly, uh, just on that note, that the county redistricting has a deadline of December 15th. So that is coming up very soon. And that is a great opportunity for you to get folks engaged now. Um, because your city redistricting plan is not hitting a deadline until 2022, April 17th. So these two things, likely the same, the same groups of people will, will show up to participate and hopefully you get more because both of these things are happening, uh, at, at relatively same time, but the county is coming first and soon.
Good point. Councilman Turan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, a, a question that I have that, I just, I'm looking for some clarification on it. Uh, for, uh, those involved in the justice system, those who are currently incarcerated, uh, Ms. Parks, I believe I heard you say that if there is a facility within our jurisdiction, uh, the folks who are there, um, if their last known address was in city of Oxnard in a specific district, they'd be counted for that district, is that correct? And what's throwing me off is the, um, facility being located in the jurisdiction. So does that mean we would only count folks who are currently in custody with our, in our county jail or someone who's in a state facility whose last known address was in the city of Oxnard? They, they would be counted in these districts as well?
This is a great question and the prisoner reallocation only applies to state prisoners, not to, to county jail. Um, there's a, a, it, it's what the census does for a lot of people who are in institutions is they do a group count, right? Where they will get the count from, from that institution. But yeah, the allocate, reallocation is only state prisons.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, um, any additional questions of, uh, city attorney or council members? This is.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager. Right, seeing none right at this moment, I'd like to make a, a follow-up statement to reiterate what, our council members and Mr. Rozell and you, sir, have stated, which is the distinction that here within the city boundaries, we must, um, conduct this process. And I know there's discussion comparing it to the original districting because it's, it was recent. But I do want to point out that this is different in the sense that we are truly rebalancing the population for the current districts that we have. So in, in some ways, hopefully, it should be easier, uh, than the original round of districting. Uh, the other point I want to make again is to, um, reiterate that we must do what's in our borders, but we need, we really need to participate in what's happening at the county level. So we need to formulate a, a, um, plan of how we're going to have, uh, our, all of you, our council members and mayor, as well as our community, participate in that process. I understand that the county will be holding one of their outreach, outreach meetings here in our city, which is wonderful, we're coordinating with them to schedule that. But we do need to come up with a, with a plan for fully participating in that process. Again, that's something we need to do, thank you.
And, uh, Mr. City Manager, I think, and Ken and Steve, it's, it's important that we have more public input. This is extremely important. I know this is, uh, the first public hearing that we've had, but if, if people listening out there, we, we need to have a lot of public input, which is extremely important to all of us. Thank you again, uh, this is a, just a receive and file. And thank you, council members. So now we're going back to the consent items.